Alright, good evening, everyone. We are calling the zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order on the date of January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Hello. I'm going to explain how this is gonna work. We'll call your case. We'll ask that each presenter identify themselves and the property question, speak your request at the board and identify your hardship and the reasons for your part for your request. Remember, your hardship cannot be financial in nature and it runs with the land. The board will then ask questions of you, after which you sit down and give those present a chance to speak. You will then be given an opportunity to answer any questions or some of your requests. We record the meeting, so everyone must speak into the microphone or and state their name. The board will then go into business session and discuss and make a decision. There are five voting members on the board and it takes four public votes for a variance to be granted. Do you have any questions before we start? Okay.
You have to be local.
Oh, okay. Can you do that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Laura Edmonds.
President.
Donna Hahnne.
President.
Jessica Harden. Luke Pajian.
President.
Rich Kerth.
President.
And then Becky Walsh.
Right. She's off the board.
Oh, she's off the board. Okay, so Cynthia Doll. Not president. And then Kristy Bonner.
No, not president. Okay, so then Rich is. Mm-hmm. All right, Rich, your seat. Okay, so it's one thirty-six South Avenue zoning variance upon application of Matthew Sullivan of Soho Group authorized agent for Mark and Christina. Is that Tarnoso?
Tarnoso.
Owners for a variance of section three, point five, point E, point three to expand an existing brick patio with new blue stone terrace beyond the front yard setback along Church Street. Terrace to include an outdoor barbecue fireplace and portico structure with two columns in the B residence zone at one thirty-six South Avenue, map end, block six-four, lot nine-six. Okay, you're welcome to begin.
Okay, thank you. My name is Matt Sullivan. I'm the architect on the project. And speaking on behalf of the clients, Mark and Christina.
Thank you.
So the hardship that we are stating here is due to the the size of the lot. So in the B residence. Oh, I should share screen.
And so I think that's the issue.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so this is the, this is the existing survey. So you can So you can see at, at the widest point of the site up here, we have fifty-eight feet. Just over fifty-eight. And at the narrowest point of the site on, on the rear of the lot, it's forty-three feet. So the average lot width here is about fifty feet. That was from the the memo that was sent out. So the, the minimum required width is seventy-five feet, so we're about twenty-five feet. Insufficient in lot width. So that is the, that is the hardship for the lot. And a little bit compounded on that is the fact that it's a corner lot, so the setback, you know, we have two twenty-five foot setbacks. So we're just, we're pinched on the church street side of the property. So what we are proposing to do Well, before we show you what we're proposing, these are the existing conditions of the lot. So what, what was there is, is a, almost like a three-tiered brick patio. You can kind of see it from these site photos here. So the top tier outside of the kitchen, it is more like a landing with the concrete slab below. And then there were two different levels of, of just bricks on grade. So there was no concrete slab below the bricks. So the bricks were, you know, they were laid in probably nineteen eighty-two, so the bricks were undulating, the surface was not was not even or very level. The homeowners have two young kids, a six-year-old and a nine-year-old. So we, we're trying to replace that with a new blue stone terrace that's all on one level and has a concrete slab beneath it, so it's, it's more of a safer walking surface for the young kids. And outside of the brick patio, existing brick patio was a white ticket fence that was in a bit of decay. It was wood and, you know, it has a three different tiers to it as well, just because the grade slopes down. So that's another element that, that we're trying to replace. So on the proposed terrace, the, as, as part of the renovation, in addition to the project, the kitchen remained in its existing location. So the kitchen, the, the front side of the house is, is living dining. The middle is kitchen. And then the garage is pushed towards the, you know, call it the right side of, of the lot. So we're trying to keep that same, we're trying to keep the terrace right off of the kitchen for obvious reasons, you know, for family parties or, or gatherings, you know, with friends. Just to have that close proximity to get into the house at a very central location. That's most likely why the patio was laid there in the eighties. So what we're proposing to do is to make this rectangle that you can see here all on one level. So there would still be a landing outside of the there would still be a landing outside of the kitchen. Three steps down to a single terrace that's all on one level. Now, the, the furthest, the highest that this terrace would be outside of or above grade would be on this side of the property because the grade slopes on that side. So it's about two feet up from grade at this corner. Whereas on this side, it is essentially at grade. You know, there may be a one-inch step, step down. So it is eighty, yeah, eighty square feet less of overall terrace than what was there before. So what we did was we just, we didn't, you know, there was a big area over here that used to be brick on, on grade and we just don't feel, we don't feel the need to take that, that space with terrace. And what we would like to do is, is have a built-in barbecue on the right side of the terrace about four feet high, you know, three-foot countertop with a little four-foot-high backsplash on the back. This element here is an outdoor fireplace about, I think it's six six feet tall from the terrace, so about seven foot eight from grade. And then this structure over here is a covered portico which would be detailed the same as this federal style front portico on the front elevation of the hall. And this is just to provide some shade and, you know, protection from the elements from this outdoor dining table. And then what we would like to do outside of the terrace here is just put a row of six-to-eight-foot arborettes kind of in place of that opaque wood fence. So, you know, it's kind of semi-private. You can, you'll see through if you want, but it gives a little bit of safety and security to, to the homeowners and their family. This is just a walkway on, ready to get to the driveway. These are the elevations up here. So you can see this is the portico. It's really just two columns with a decorative, decorative railing above. No, no humans can occupy that area. And then you can see here, you know, this, this is that outdoor fireplace. There's the barbecue on the side. And essentially your terrace is straight across and then a two-foot step down. And then the, the other side, so you're looking at the back of the barbecue. And we tuck a couple of steps up to the terrace on the side. And then this is the outdoor fireplace.
What is the width, okay?
So the, the terrace is approximately twelve, twelve feet up on this side over here, the left side, that's, that's almost a flush walkout, eleven foot nine, so, so, you know, just under twelve feet. And then just with the, the nature of the geometry of the addition over here, it's about maybe thirteen yeah, thirteen foot nine. But in general, you know, it's about twelve feet by thirty-six feet. And, and that's the five hundred and twenty square feet. And then again, what, just to, to wrap this up in summary by saying that that we really, we really do want to, would like to have this terrace on this side of the house with that close proximity to the kitchen. So for the family events with grandparents coming over, that it's a simple three steps down into the terrace. And it's a safe spot for the kids to play. The rear yard all the way to the right will be fenced in and that is more for the kids to play sports, you know, soccer net, I don't know, baseball or lacrosse pitchback. So, so this rear yard is really the space for the, the kids to, to play sports and to be in, in a safe area, whereas this is the where we would like to have the terrace off the kitchen.
Could you help me with setback line that you're here? It looks to be in a different location than what's shown on the survey.
Okay, yeah. So this was, yeah, that I wrote approximate on the architecturals. The architecturals, but this is the proposed survey. So these are the, these are the setbacks in nearest corner dimensions that were listed in the memo.
So, so setback, the twenty-five foot setback is the one that runs through the house, correct?
Yes, yeah, this line over here is the twenty-five foot setback that, that should, the lot is, is very undersized. This line here is, I guess, in nineteen eighty-one, they, they were approved for a variance to make that setback sixteen feet. And as you can see, when we did the new addition, which is essentially wrapping up construction now, you know, we're sixteen and a half feet. So, so we, we did not ask for any variances for the addition renovation. It's just the terrace that we're asking for the variance.
Okay, and then on the terrace, can you tell me the distance? I see on one corner of the terrace, there are seven feet to the property line on the proposed. What is it on the existing?
So this seven feet is actually to the portico. The surveyor just snapped that to the portico.
Okay.
So the, the nearest point of the terrace is four feet off of the property line.
And the existing is? But John, just I think I'm reading that the distance from the fire pit to the, it's one point.
Yeah, no, I agree. The fire pit projects a little.
Yeah, I agree with you there. I'm now trying to see whether the terrace is getting wider as well.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not, it's not located on the surveyor's drawing here, but I do believe it's four feet because.
So it's listed on a survey from actually, it's not.
It's four feet. I mean, this, again, a dimension that that I took, the surveyor didn't list that. Again, it's, it's a, it's a brick. It's just bricks.
No, I understand. But, but I, I guess my question is, are the bricks extending farther towards Church Street, excuse me, is the new patio extending farther towards Church Street than what was there?
It is by one foot. We, we've kind of narrowed up the patio and would like to lengthen it by one foot from existing. But I, I also just want to point out that on this side of the property line, there's, there's another six feet of grass before the curb. Let me go to the proposed survey. Unzoom in. So here, this nearest corner that we're talking about is four feet. But this is also, this is also grass. There, there is no delineation of fence or there is no stone site wall or anything like that. It did, it did, there is a buffer of grass there that.
I understand. Yeah, I understand, but.
In the one half, but you're planning on having plantings there and.
Uh, no, I don't know. I, I think what we did was we proposed to stop the arborettes there and just let the stucco finish of the fire, you know, the arborettes would essentially kind of run into the side on both sides. That's obviously an opaque fireplace anyway, so we didn't feel it was necessary to plant around that.
Luke, Luke Tashen speaking. So if this wasn't a corner lot, it'd be a twenty-five foot setback. You have a variance for a sixteen foot setback. I mean, I mean, if there's a corner lot, it's a twenty-five foot setback. If it wasn't a corner lot, it'd be an eight-foot setback. Your variance for a sixteen foot setback. But you want us to allow one and a half foot setback? Like, that's a lot more than even if it wasn't a corner lot. If it wasn't a corner lot, you'd have an eight-foot setback.
Yeah, I mean.
You have a one and a half foot setback, so being a corner lot doesn't really help you here on your argument, because if it wasn't a corner lot, you'd have to have an eight-foot setback there. Like, so you're asking for less than would even be allowed if it wasn't a corner lot by a lot, like four hundred percent less.
Yeah, but we just don't, i- if we were to try to, to the reason we, we jutted out the outdoor fireplace outside of the terrace was so that the clients could actually get some furniture and seating area there. And, and again, there is, there is another, you know, call it six feet of grass buffer that's outside of that nearest edge.
But that's not your property, so it doesn't.
Right, I get, yeah, I guess I'm just trying to say it's not.
Theoretically, the town can take it and put a sidewalk there.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. No.
So you're looking at a one and a half foot setback.
Yes, at, at the outside edge of the outdoor fireplace.
And, and seven for the portico. Because that's the other thing that's changing is you're going up for the covered dining area.
Covered portico, correct.
Your hardship argument doesn't make any sense when you're asking for more than when it would be allowed if it wasn't a corner lot. Like, I understand that twenty-five feet on each side creates a hardship, but let's assume this is a necessary use of the property, which is definitely questionable. Like, in the past, we found things like this are not necessary uses, because not everyone in town needs outdoor fireplace or poolhouse or things like that. Let's assume this is necessary. You're still asking for an ask that's greater than if it wasn't even a corner lot. Which would be an unusual thing for someone to ask of us.
Um. Yeah, I guess so, but the lot is undersized by twenty-five feet width.
But that's how you've managed to get variance for the building. So I think the challenge for us is trying to understand how the hardship connects to this, which as Luke has pointed out, is not necessarily a necessary use of the property, which is the reason and rationale that we're always looking forward to how we're going to grant variance. There are other configurations as well. Certainly, I can appreciate that there's been attempts to downsize the patio in one area. I'm having trouble with a one and a half foot setback for the fireplace. As sort of, that's a really substantial ask in my view. And there might be other ways to configure that, whether it's putting the fireplace at the ends where you have the outdoor seating and moving the lounge area there, then moving your dining table closer to the kitchen and the grill. There might be ways where you could do that and just home and, I mean, I'd like to see maybe a different rendering that wouldn't ask for that that one half foot and maybe would be closer to like a seven foot.
Interesting. Yep. This is Rich Kerth. Do you have an approximate? How many feet is it from the bottom of the steps coming out from the kitchen to where the fire pit is now approximately?
So this line is, it's just over three feet, so call it four feet, five feet. Okay. Five feet. Yeah, I would say maybe
Approximately.
Nine feet.
Sorry, you had said the variance that we got for the building. Well, it was with the building. Oh, yeah, I know you didn't hear, but I didn't, I was like, yeah, yeah. But that's how you. It's great, great, it'll be initial, like, I'll ask them for another variance. So, yeah, I appreciate that, but. No, I didn't, I didn't know you were talking about one for ninety.
And how high is the portico?
So the portico, the column itself, zoom in.
Well, total height, I guess.
Yeah.
Like, and everything.
Yeah. So in order to clear, you know, these existing transom windows, we have we ten foot six plus another is maybe two foot six, so thirteen feet to the top of the decorative balcony, back railing. Obviously, we don't, we don't need the decorative railing. We're, we're, we're trying to play up the federal style of the existing home, which is, you know, why the homeowners chose to buy the house.
Just want to comment there, like, it was really important to us to keep like, the aesthetic of the home. And I, I've heard from a lot of our neighbors and that have been kind, um, you know, that they, they're so appreciative and they knew the former owners and were saying how happy they would be that, like, I think when they saw that, like, renovations were being done on a home, they were like, you're going to attack this beautiful home. And it's really like the reason why we got it is because we love, you know, the feel of it. And obviously, we love the location. It, it is, you know, we're trying to work within it and I, I hope, you know, that we've shown, we definitely wanted to be accommodating to the, to the space. And we do have a family of four. We have two kids that are growing a little too quickly. Um, but it's why we wanted to keep the backyard for them. And, you know, it's tough right now. They can't even really use it for the renovation. But, um, you know, we do have parents, thank God, they're still alive. And we'd like to have them come visit. We we weren't living in, in the state for a couple of years. We, we were across the country and we're happy to be back on the East Coast. And we'd like to have them come stay with us finally. So we were just trying to figure out a way that we could have them, you know, come and be outside. I'm kind of thinking about like Mother's Day and I'm going to host my my mother-in-law and my mom, and but they are in their late seventies. So I'm trying to keep it all on one level. And how can we make this like a, a real place that I can see my kids utilizing as the years go on. And I'm completely open to a reconfiguration. And I'm almost like, please help me, help us. Like, I can keep the, we can keep the width of the thing that it originally was. And I'm like, maybe the personally like to be outside of them. I, we come from, I come from the West Coast and I was like, like to be outside. I'm like, it's freezing here. So I was like, that heat would make me, you know, but I'm like, how can I be out there in the couple of seasons that is a little crazy to be outside. But if we can move that, like, maybe to where you're suggesting, like closer to the, to the front, or we can keep the original width, maybe instead of just a walkway, maybe we could put the the items there.
Jessica, the concerns, concern with one and a half. Get that. But we just moved it towards stairs. I think Rich, maybe where you were going at.
Right, because I, again, Rich, I did sympathize. I did drive by, walk around on Saturday and yeah, I could sympathize with the situation, but I think, yeah, the fireplace is kind of a little bit overpassing in, in my opinion. Just because it's, you know, the fire pit, it is a fire pit. I love fires myself, but, you know, it, it's just so close to the, unfortunately, you know.
I thought like, because I like those things I can put in the middle and around. I just got nervous because I was like one trip and like you're in the center. Thanks. I was like, oh, my God. But I was like, oh, we could like keep it off to the side.
Right, right.
Not acceptable.
I think that the you know, the thing that we're struggling with is to give a variant, you've got to grant just enough relief to solve the problem. So if you start with the lot is very narrow and you look at the actual setback, you couldn't have built the heck of something, right? So that's why they granted the original variance to get enough of, enough buildable areas so that you could utilize the lot. You know, I struggle a bit just because I think, well, this would be gorgeous. It feels like we're taking that now. And instead of making a usable lot, we're making a more usable lot, you know, and, and it's starting to cross the boundaries of what a variant should be granted for. And, you know, my first thing is the thing, which is the fireplace at a foot and a half. You know, that's really, you know, it feels like it's on the strip. This is the way I would react to it.
Yep.
I'm a little concerned about the portico as well, because that's a structure that we've known increased volume in addition, you know, into the setback as well. I understand the design that that helps mirror what's in the front. It also, I guess, provides some degree of screening and breakup, if you will, of on the, the line to the house. So I, I kind of get that and it's setback a little bit more. But to be candid with you, it just feels like where we are with, with what's in front of us to me is going, it's too big of an ass.
Is it justified? I just want, I really want to be clear on what is it the fireplace?
Well, I mean, honestly, no, well, that's certainly the thing that is really the biggest thing.
Okay.
But honestly, I could pick some other things here that, that are also bothersome to me. I don't think they changed, for example, the setback line to sixteen and a half feet. I think they approved a design that is lowest, or its narrowest point was sixteen and a half feet, but it was done with the design in front of them. I mean, that's in this day and age, how we do it, we're like today, sitting there looking at plants. So we've also built, you know, already there, you've extended the kitchen into that area too, right? Which is already done. So it just feels like there's a lot going on. And to Luke's point, I, I don't, you know, are those necessary to resolve the, the negative, you know, the, the narrowest of the site? Again, be lovely. I, I understand why you want to do it, but I just, it, it's feeling like in totality with the the fireplace being the biggest thing for me, it's a lot of ass.
So is there.
Luke, Luke Tashen speaking. Our jurisdiction agreed to grant a variance is going to be very hard to exist here, because I don't know how you're going to establish that these are necessary uses of your property, having a built-in barbecue. You know, ha- having a built-in fireplace, having a portico. I, I, I think it's, we can only grant a variance if because of topography, shape, items like that, reasonable use is in little, is impossible and little enforcement of the zoning variance would cause an exceptional hardship. And it's hard to say an exceptional hardship would exist here, because not everyone has a built-in barbecue. Not everyone has a built-in fireplace. Not everyone has a portico covering their porch. And this house was bought without those things. And yes, there's not space off the back now to potentially expand, but that's because they just built another addition off the back of the house, limiting to this area. And again, that's a self-created hardship and that self-created hardship we can't consider. So this is a really a much greater ask than I can remember us seeing on this board in, in many respects. And our jurisdiction is just very limited because it's against public policy to allow spot zoning. Like, everyone's supposed to comply with the variances unless that it would result in a taking, a constitutional taking, which is almost never the case. Or this exceptional difficulty test is met. And there's nothing indicated here to me how any of these would pass that exceptional difficulty test.
I'm surprised to hear that report. I just have to speak on and say, I'm surprised to hear that the portico would at all be an issue. I mean, there is significant heat and sun. My mom is seventy-seven, my dad is seventy-nine. I can't put them outside and have them get fresh air and come visit. Put them outside and have them get fresh air to come visit.
One question, sorry. And the coverage, you're okay on the coverage of the lot?
Yeah.
A lot, I know people didn't mention, but.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanna make sure.
Absolutely. So we.
So like the portico.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Only everything was past.
So.
What about the backyard? Did you say you better, you spoke about there's green space in the backyard? Is there space there? To potentially put some of this.
Definitely because there, uh, I'm so glad you brought that up. Um. That is the safe space that I feel our kids play in is the backyard. Playing on the side, the reason why I would feel comfortable to put the hedges there in some type of separation, because as you mentioned, there is no sidewalk there. Um, I would be thrilled actually if there was a sidewalk there, but, um. But there isn't. And, um, I feel a lot more safe having my kids in the backyard playing. And I don't want to deprive my kids. Of the ability to have a backyard and we love that yard. In fact, we were, you know. It's. I'm excited for them to start playing in it. And I really would love to be able to have. Patio for my family.
Is there any way to have some green space back there and? Bring the patio in so that we can have both back here and bought?
I thought, and I think maybe we just approached it from a different thinking as everybody. And that's why I'd love it to be. A collaborative approach that we. Thought we were doing a good thing by even like condensing the patio. So it wasn't so much. Um, cause I think, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear. So if we. Just kept the patio as it was, like when we bought it, like we could do that. We could just build the, the blue stone over the patio space that was existing when it was there?
That's what it says in the note.
We. Because that's actually bigger.
So it's, it's. It was approved, it was built in the nineteen eighties. When that house was built and it was signed off on by staff in nineteen eighty-two. So it's grandfathered in and that's why. So if you. Pour it up because you wanted to replace the brick, you put it in the same exact location and it stayed on grade. We wouldn't be here.
Oh, wow. Okay. I mean, that seems. Grandiose to me. I don't know where grandiose than I think what we, we, what we kind of went. We don't need all of that.
The issue is that you raised it to become a terrace, so it's now a structure, which is why the setbacks.
The portico.
No, no. So when you raise a patio, it becomes a terrace in our regulations, even if you just raise it an inch or two. And that is a structure. And so then you have to start following the setbacks, which is why.
Alright, so because we're putting cement down.
Yes, it's, it's now a structure.
I, I think it. Because it, it was tiered. So it was essentially they kept it on grade as much as humanly possible. And then they added a set of steps. And then they kept it on grade on the high grade. It didn't look good, but.
No, I, I mean, obviously, like, yeah, grid was brown, it was like, yeah, but so you're saying if we kept it exactly as it was. And just put something a little bit, you know, safer there like blue stone. And even kept it tiered. We can do that.
If it, if it's life for life.
I mean, that's a lot. But I'm just saying like, that's big to me. Like, that's a large. That's a large amount of. I mean, if, 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 I just. We just really wanted the outdoor space. I thought we were trying to be a little bit cleaner about it as. Safer. But if, if you're saying that basically we can just have all that space back to have a patio. If that feels more grandiose to me, but I mean, I'll, I'll take it. Like, you know, I'll, I'll do it.
And winning, well, I guess we can go. But they could put a wet concrete. Patio if they wish, as long as it's on great. Right? That shouldn't matter. So you could, you know, to make it safer, you could do a wet concrete slab or whatever it's called. And put blue stone on top of it as long as it's on grade. That, if you wanted to do that.
What you might wanna do is, is. I can, I can speak for the members of the board. Potentially the, uh, getting the feeling from the board. That, I mean, it's totally up to you if you wanted us to go into business session and vote on this. But it may not go your way.
Yes, so.
No, so if you would like to. It's totally up to you, but we can go into business and we could vote, or you could continue it and speak to, go back and speak to. Um, go back into town hall and see if you wanted to rework this. Um, even, you know, be. You have two choices. You could redo these plans, take another swipe at it. I don't know what the, you know, you might get another, another chance. We, I don't know if.
No, I.
Anything else, none of us, or you can. Um, go back and, um, speak with Sarah and, and Lynn and see if.
Yeah, I'm not mad, just so everybody knows, but I would, I'm not like married to this drug. This felt. Like logical is what I'm saying. Like it felt.
Not to the town.
Right, I understand that. That's why I think the conversation is so helpful.
Yes.
Because we don't, I mean, we're not. We're right. And we don't know what gets approved or not. So I'm like. I'm like, oh, okay. So you're.
Our first stand on hope maybe like. Maybe if Lynn and Sarah, if you were just speaking with them and, you know, just help them guide through.
Like, that would be.
Yeah, I'd like to know though, what we should do with portico or some kind of. Yeah, I'd like, I agree. I'd like some sort of a.
Little hot, I think here, here's the way I'm looking at it is. The portico, it looks beautiful, right? So I don't have a problem with it from a design perspective. That's not even honestly. What we're supposed to be doing. But what you, what you are doing is building additional structure in the setback.
Okay.
So to me, just like raising it or putting the fireplace. A foot and a half back. Is a further. Build in an area where technically you're not supposed to build.
Okay.
Right? I mean, we've said you can do stuff on the ground. See. And in a way, it's a little silly because you could put a big umbrella there, right? Uh, to get, it, it, which kind of is, is the same thing, but you're putting up, you know, a structure in the setback. I'm, I'm a little less concerned about it. Because it's farther back, right? Uh, I, I struggle a lot more with a foot and a half.
Yeah.
But, but, and, and I'd be saying absolutely no if it were where the barbecue was because it'd be. You know, where the block is more narrow.
Right.
But that is a. A concern to me as well. Okay, just I'm being perfectly candid, right? And the reason it's a concern is not an aesthetic concern. It's because there's a structure going up in the setback. Right? So it's a further encroachment. Into the setback. And normally what we'd like to see is. You know, what you try to do, which is. The negative variance is being reduced by eighty feet, which is a good thing, right? So sometimes when we're making trades, we, you know, we consider. That overall the, 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 uh. Non-conformity is being reduced, but we're still granting a variance for something, right? So like. For example. Building the fireplace. In the setback, if it weren't a foot and a half back, would be a change from what you currently have. But if that is. Being offset by an eighty-foot reduction, we do take those things.
Yeah.
Cause ideally over time, we're trying to reduce the non-conformity.
Yeah.
Not expand the non-conformity, right? And our hints to what Luke said is. He. If you looked at the original setback line of twenty-five feet, you couldn't build a house on the lot, right? So that's a perfect case. For saying a variant should be granted. But that doesn't mean you get to book, build necessarily a thirty thousand foot house because. And there's, you know, you have a, a ten-person family or something, or that's what you want, right? You, you grant enough. To resolve the issue. Okay? So I, I, that's.
Yeah. And is this the place to ask those kind of questions? Or are you saying like, as we reconfigure, we talk to you? Because I think like.
Luke Tashen speaking. I think those questions are what you'd normally ask like your architect or engineer or attorney. Cause those are legal questions, like for us to have jurisdiction. There has to be a taking or an exceptional difficulty. Our jurisdiction is not to decide whether we like it or not, and we're not allowed to consider personal factors. If someone's. You know, as a family of twelve, like John was saying, we can't consider it. If someone's a senior citizen and needs something, we can't consider it. It has to be a factor related to the land before we even get jurisdiction.
But that doesn't, that can, you can't take that in.
So I think like for, I think, well. I don't know. If this isn't allowed, just tell me. But like, so the existing space that we have to work with, if I. Did wanna put something that covers from the sun. Could I do it in the existing space that I have to work with?
No, you would need a variance. If it's a, if it's a structure, you need a variance. If it's like an umbrella or something. Then you, then it's not a structure. But if you're building a structure in the setback, you need a variance.
Think of it in terms of the permanency of it. So we've actually, I think for somebody else who's proposing a portico. Seven months ago, maybe even a year ago, what was suggested was, my grandmother had it, those old. They would roll out, right?
The one you can see.
That was, you know, have a shade roll out and cover and then it would roll back into house. And then it's like a temporary. You know, passing into the setback as opposed to saying that's a permanent fixture. Or, you know, like John and Kate, like an umbrella is, is okay. Like, I'm sure even sales, that they have a new sales. That's something that wouldn't be permanently fixed to the house forever and ever. So that's like, I think in terms of what's a fixture. Sometimes as to what would be like the most troublesome aspect. Of, you know, what, and I completely sympathize. I'm an in-town law as well as owner and. You know, there's, you don't get to do that you wish you could do. But there are creative ways to try to figure out how to maximize those I would like to have versus what would give you. The use of the lot as it's intended, so.
But, you know, who knows what will happen, what you'll decide, but I think they want to. You know, in, in a pretty good option.
We pull back a lot of experience with that. We, we had one once, that's why I'm like laughing.
In those things.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, in my, Rich, just my point of view is, you know, the hardship, you know, could be, you know, the lot, I did walk around, the lot is pretty narrow, right? And, and I know you got the variance to build the house. But one.
We did.
I'm not, I mean, the property did. One, one could expect that if you're allowed to build a house, you're allowed to have some, you, you may argue that you could have some type of patio again, you know, whatever. But, you know, I, I think, yeah, the fireplace is really tough. You know, maybe you consider narrowing the patio just a little bit. You know.
To meet that, that existing edge there.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, speak with, you know, the folks and. Maybe you get there. I, I, you know, it might be and only might be, but I, I would. You know, I mean, it, you know, it is an hour lot. The, it's been a nice shot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That we're not gonna go into business session, so we'll keep it open.
Thank you.
And, um, that, that, I don't wanna make that.
Yeah, what does that mean?
So business session would kind of, if we get denied, it's totally.
Yeah, and then I think that it has to, yeah, a three of us, so you. Tell me, so open means like we go back and try to figure out.
Yeah, but I think it's time.
To the next hearing, which is Monday, February sixth. And during that time, you guys would. Either come up with new plans to submit them up to them, or you figure out a plan that doesn't require a variance and then you withdraw the application. Um, so we need plans before. Like a week, like two weeks before February sixth, essentially. So the board could.
Yeah, it gives you an opportunity to re-present what you have. Or, you know, go back to the drawing board, if you will, or you may come up with something that doesn't even need a variance, so.
But the, but by leveling out the. Tears of the existing, by leveling that out. And essentially raising the terrace by two feet on the right side. Uh, from what I understand, that would require a variance because then not on grade.
Yes, because once, the moment it becomes off of grade, it's a structure.
Right.
So then it doesn't.
But isn't there, Sarah, um. Isn't there a height above grade or an average height above grade that triggers that?
It's just anything, any patio above grades officially, a terrace, which is a structure.
Got you. Thank you.
Three feet and over accounts starts coverage.
Right.
To be under.
It doesn't. So, okay, that's what.
So the cement thing doesn't matter. It's just. Being where it's got, yeah, okay.
And what about that chamfered corner?
Cause I was like, I, I kinda wanna put cement down, I think, right? Keep it.
Oh, we'll talk to her offline, but. There's a little chamfered corner there. Is there an issue with us, us, my computer died. Um. Is there, would there? Be an issue with us wearing awkward corner on the, say, bottom left of, of the drawing? Sorry, my computer's stuck.
This one.
Yeah, the bottom left corner. It used to be on a little diagonal. Is that an issue squaring that up?
It does have to be like for like. Like has to, it has to be the same. Cause you're then. You're going closer and you're into the property eye.
But if you were gonna go with a version of this and. You know, at least in my view, if you reduce some of the original. And like try to figure out how to get, you know. Wishes. And, and something that is less than, at least less close to the edge. Particularly with respect to the fireplace.
Yeah.
I, I think that's something that we would. Welcome seeing and just.
Yeah, yeah.
But we cannot do any guarantees that.
Right, right.
That, that would.
Yeah.
But just so you have more room to at least kind of think about how you configure things, like. Just knowing how the existing footprint, you could always kind of figure out how.
Yeah.
And maybe you still save forty, you know.
Yeah.
Instead of eighty, whatever. There's, there's opportunities there that helps it make it more feasible with like your.
And I encourage you to talk to Sarah and Lynn and they can. One other question, were there letters to neighbors?
Oh, yeah.
And I'm just curious, the neighbors say anything?
I don't see anybody here or.
Yeah. Good afternoon, neighbors, knock on the door. Yeah, I mean, they were sent out, right?
Right.
So I'm sure it missed a couple of them, both like, okay. And they were all.
Who was Lynn?
Cause when is the town player?
Oh, fine, okay. Cause she, but she's not here.
She's not able to.
And, and Sarah says, okay, so you and Lynn.
Yeah. Well.
It was okay. They're just like. Oh.
Yeah, that's like just.
Yeah.
So, okay. Okay, so we'll say that the matter is officially continued.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Maybe.
Yeah, we did it very well.
Would the, uh, the survey need to be updated? You know, if we were to just say, pull a couple of elements. Uh, just concerned that, you know, surveyors work, sometimes you wait five weeks for them to erase one line. Um, if we were to resubmit your drawings in two weeks. Uh, would the survey need to perfectly match the architectural?
Everything should be updated. So, I mean, the option is if you can't get everything done, um, you have to grant us an extension, but it could be pushed to the. Six meeting.
Okay, so the survey does need to.
Basically, because we usually refer back.
Yeah.
Also because. You grant the area that runs with the land, so it has to be filed.
And do we, do we with the letters and that?
No, because it's continued. It's the same public hearing.
Oh, so it's, yeah. Yeah.
No additional filing. All right, well, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Where in the web?
Uh. Considered housing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, it, yeah.
I'm from.
Oh, nice. Yeah, so let's call on where.
Yeah, different places.
Yeah. My son got sick of. Even like, it's always the same. I just want it to be, I want weather. I'm like. You're like, terrible, what you wish for.
Right.
We're gonna get.
Wait till they start traveling. The other reason we need a part of the, I'm just kidding.
Okay, so any other discussion that now in a minute?
Uh, yes, Miss Spelling and Mahoney on page one, uh, two. Maloney. I think you both are okay. Yeah. Right on page two. That was the only comment. Yeah.
Maybe.
Okay, yeah.
I'm okay.
Okay, all those in favor of, um, approving the minutes? Corrected minutes, corrected minutes. Okay, it's unanimous. Um, and other, let's see.
Yeah, the, uh.
The schedule. That's good.
I didn't see any problem.
Nope.
Any thoughts? Okay, any, um, all those in favor of um approving the scheduled hearings or meetings? How, all those in favor, okay, it's unanimous. Yeah, anything else?
You can wait a second for the record on any of this.
I'm second.
Three seconds?
I will, we need a. We need to second though.
I want some surgery there.
Okay, so I guess uh we will adjourn.
Yep, Luke, how are you feeling before you go?
You wanna undo the recording?
Yeah, stop the.